Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting, the regular meeting of the Kingman City Council on Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, at 5:00 PM. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Present.
Vice Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mello.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand and join me? The invocation will be given by Pastor Matt Maestas of Hope City Church and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we come before you today, God, and we ask that you would be in every moment of this meeting, Lord, that you would begin to give wisdom to all the council members, Lord, and that your will would be done in this meeting, in your holy name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First order of business this evening is an appointment to our Parks, Aquatics, Recreation and Golf Commission. This commission has one vacancy at this time for a term expiring December 31st, 2023. There is currently one application on file from Joanne Olson. Staff recommends the appointment of Joanne Olson to the Park Commission for the remainder of this term. I don't see Ms. Olson here. And Mike Mearsman is saying, no, she's not here. And she's not on Zoom. So the liaison to the Park Commission is?
That's me, Mayor.
Councilmember Mello. Do you have any comments?
I totally support Joanne in this, and I would like to make a motion, if I may.
Sure.
That we appoint Joanne Olson to the remainder of that term, the commission term ending December 31st, 2023.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'd like to second that.
Ha. I think we all know Joanne Olson. I will give that to Vice Mayor. Yes, and my only comment is that she, Ms. Olson has been a very engaged member of our community for so many years, and we really appreciate her application. In fact, I just last saw her at the Walk Away From Drugs. So this is really nice that she's willing to serve. There's a motion and a second to appoint her to the commission. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. The next order of business is called to the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out forms in advance or let our city clerk know that they wanted to make comments by Zoom or in writing. Clerk Meredith, have there been any comments submitted or requests for comment other than in this meeting?
Madam Mayor, we did not have anybody registered to join us via Zoom tonight. We have no written comments we've received ahead of time. We just have members of the audience that have signed up.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk Ferguson. And so we do have two speakers lined up, and the first one will be Gordon Klein. Yes, please come and address the council. Give us your name and residence.
Everybody hear me okay, or how's this work?
Just speak right into the microphone. That will, that will help everybody.
That better?
Yes, online too.
Okay. We got a real problem on the South Side. I call them homeless hotels.
Could you please just?
Excuse me?
Give your name and residence and then?
Gordon Klein, Kingman, Arizona, 200 Gokon Avenue West.
Okay, thank you.
Cool. We got a real problem on the South Side with homeless, the homeless problem, abandoned homes. I call them homeless hotels. I've got four examples here. 202 Topeka Street, that place has never been secured. It's probably been, it's been owned by three different people that I know in the last 15 years. It's been a homeless hotel this whole time. So the last three years, they've been working on that place, but nothing's been accomplished. They keep knocking more down off that place, and that just gives more people easier ways to go in there and sleep and stay all night. It's, it's got numerous, what's the word I'm looking for, homeless activity at that place over, over this last three years. It's been pretty crazy there. The place that really concerns me is 407 Taylor, which was right by my home. Okay, that place right there is another, another homeless hotel. It's been going on for five years. I know the owners, I've talked to them on numerous times, they own A1 Tire. I've gone in there and I've literally screamed at them to do something about this place. They won't do anything. Well, you know, we're doing it. They're not doing anything. They're not getting anything together. About a week ago, they kind of secured the home. The garage that's behind that is just a great big, it's ready to go up in flames. It's just full of everything, it's just gonna go kaboom. The whole South Side's gonna catch fire at that point. When that catches fire, it's gonna go into that desert area, which is all dried out, and it's just gonna take off. We almost had a fire over there years ago farther on Taylor Street, and I came unglued on the guy for not being set up for a fire. He had no fire protection. We were in a really bad situation quickly. Got it put out, and I went, I went ballistic on the guy. Well, anyway, that place there, by the time anybody gets to help it, that whole garage is gonna go up. It's gonna spread, it's gonna go next, it's just gonna go everywhere. It's gonna be a mess. I mean, it is a huge fiery hazard. I have talked to those people, the guys who own that, numerous times are like, yeah, well, we're working on it, we're gonna do something. Well, they've really done nothing. And here's the kicker, that whole thing over there. It's barely secure, the garage is not secure. It's cured a few years ago, the same cars are still up there. They used to be out in front of the house. Well, kids came up there and used that for, what do you call that when you bang on cars and you beat them up with sledgehammers? They do that at carnivals. Anyway, they came up there and completely beat up every, those two cars, beat them to death, broken windows, the whole works, went through the place, broke all the windows out. It was a mess. They took those same two cars and just moved them to the back, so they're still there. It's just a prob, an eyesore, the whole place is an eyesore, it's a mess. The big thing about that place is they've openly bragged about the fact their septic system does not work. It's barely, I don't think it'd pass at this point. That might be reason to have this thing condemned. I don't know. I'd sure like to see somebody go in there and do that, because at this point, talking to these people on a, like we are here, on a logical basis is not working at all. You know, they're just like, well, yeah, we're gonna do something about it, we're trying to do it, they're doing nothing. So that's, that one there. The other thing is, the whole kicker to that was, last Sunday, like, two people pulled up there, went in that place, and I went, okay, these are homeless people going in here. I called the police immediately, they came up, it was about 7:30 in the morning. They talked to those two people for roughly, I'd say, 15 minutes before I could get out over there to talk to the cops, they left. They did nothing. Then they didn't talk to the people that own the place, and I talked to them on Monday and said, what's going on?
Thank you. Your time's up. The council really cannot respond to this, but I will refer this to Manager Foggan to look into these complaints.
All right.
Thank you.
And the police chief has a business card for him.
And Mr. Klein, Chief Cooper wants you to take his business card. Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Roeburg.
Good evening. My name is Mike Roeburg, and I live downtown. My complaint is barking dogs. We've got a lot of barking dogs. We got one in particular. It barks 24/7. When the owners are not home, it barks. They were gone for two and a half weeks, a few months ago. It barked, barked and barked. It has a high-pitched voice. I've spoken to the owner several times. She refuses to discuss it. Thursday night, the cops were called, and I was issued a no trespassing. So I told the cop, and I told her that I would be here tonight to complain. I have absolutely no faith in the Kingman City Council to do anything about it. I called Monday mor, no, Friday morning and filed a complaint. The code enforcement officer showed up, took the complaint. He said, give me the forms, I filled them out, give me a call when they're done, I'll come pick them up. I called, he no show. I called Monday, was his day off. I called twice today, and the line was busy. So that tells me code enforcement is a total failure. I've had other people complain about them, they don't do nothing. I'm not the only one. I'm trying to be nice, 'cause I'm boiling up to here, and I don't expect code enforcement to do anything. But since Thursday night, the dog's been quiet, and it only lives a half a block. It's got a very high-pitched voice, and it has no license. I thought dogs in the city were supposed to have license. The dogs at the other corner, there's three of them there, they have no license. I asked code enforcement a couple of years ago about a dog that barked 24/7, same thing, big German shepherd. I said, did you check the dog for license? No, I have no authority. I said, did you check the dog, see if it had its shots? I have no authority. So what good is code enforcement if they don't have any authority to do anything? So as matter of fact, it's just a waste of time. The guy didn't even show up today to pick up the forms. They've got a 30-some-foot trailer parked in the street. It's been there for eight, nine weeks. I called about it, nothing. I spoke to him on Friday, I'll take care of it. It's still parked there. You passed an ordinance that said, no, no parking on the street. They go up and down Beale Street. I see them every day going up and down. They don't look left or right, so they don't see nothing. So I'm thoroughly disgusted. Now, I'm gonna give you this report that he was supposed to pick up. And what you do with it, I don't care.
Could you give that to the city manager, please?
But I promise you, like I told the cop, I will take care of the dog. Thank you.
And the police officer, is that one here? You heard me. My blood pressure is low, keep breathing.
Next order of business is the consent agenda. All matters here are listed, are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion. Unless discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do any members of the council want to remove any item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would prefer a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through H.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mayor, I will move that we approve the consent agenda items A through B. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Walker has the motion. Councilor Nelson has the second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. We'll now address old business. This is, this is going to be a public hearing regarding ordinance number 1930, adopting water and wastewater capacity fees. The city of Kingman hired Tischler Bice in November 2019 to perform a development fee study, which included evaluating the existing water development fees. As this study progressed and stakeholders provided their input, the city asked Tischler Bice to perform a study on existing water connection fees too. It is being proposed that water and wastewater capacity fees replace the current water connection fees and wastewater development fees, referred to as sewer investment fees. Staff recommends the city council hold a public hearing and adopt ordinance 1930, which adopts water and wastewater capacity fees effective December 20th, 2021. And we have, I see Director Moline here to present this to us.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. This evening is the final step in the adoption of the water and wastewater capacity fees. Tonight, we have with us Ben Griffin, who has presented to you many times before, and will share a similar presentation on the capacity fees that he shared with you in September. I'll hand that over to Ben so that he can share that with you. At the end of his presentation, we will certainly answer any questions and discussion and public comment that may be. I also would like to point out one item in the ordinance as we move forward as well. So Ben, I'll hand that over to you.
Thanks, Tina. Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, thanks for allowing me to speak again tonight. This should be, you know, a little shorter than the previous presentations, because you've all seen it before. So I'll jump right into it. So we're gonna talk about water and wastewater capacity fees. At the end, we'll look at the fee summary and then the adoption timeline. So before we jump into the water factors, think of capacity fees in a similar way as development fees. It's just a way to have future development pay their proportionate share of, you know, capital costs related to water and sewer. So on slide three, you can see the water factors. This is actually taken straight from your master plan. And so what it's saying here is that, you know, on an average day, a residential customer uses 206 gallons of water per day. Now, we're using that as our proxy or our base meter size, and then, you know, all the other land uses, as they need larger meters, we'll adjust it, and you'll see those, those factors in a few slides. But the 206 is important, because that's gonna be our base that we're gonna build from. Because you are actually sizing your water infrastructure based on max day, we're applying a peaking factor from your, from your master plan. So it says that, you know, for a max day, a residential customer uses 309 gallons. So essentially, all we're doing is taking it from this average day to max day, again, because that's what you design your system to handle. So assuming, you know, 309 gallons, we also took the, the projected increase in gallons from your master plan. And so you can see sort of in the middle, that red outlined area, the 10-year projection of max day demand shows an increase of about 2.7 million gallons. So what we're trying to do is, you know, size infrastructure to make sure that you have 2.7 million gallons worth of capacity. And so on this next slide, these are the actual improvements that you need. So they're broken out into wells, storage and booster stations, and then distribution transmission lines. And so what you see at the top with the wells, because you do have some available capacity in your existing wells, and you need to build well number 10, what we've done is we've said, okay, well, the, you know, your existing wells, they're about 10 point, or $10 million. The planned well number 10 is 2.75 million dollars. So, you know, all of the, the total cost of these, you know, planned wells, we've got 12.8 million dollars. We're gonna divide that by the total capacity of all those wells, and so the cost of existing and planned wells is, you know, about 61 cents per gallon. So what we're doing here is just saying, hey, for future development, they should pay 61 cents per gallon for their, you know, required capacity. And based on, you know, 2.7 million gallons of, you know, increased demand, you would generate about 1.6 million dollars to be used towards wells over the next 10 years. Moving down with storage and booster stations, it's a very similar approach where we just take the, you know, the cost of your existing storage and booster stations, which is about 8.9 million. We add in your planned storage and booster stations, which are, you know, almost $4 million, divided by the total capacity. And so for storage and booster stations, future development should be paying 92 cents per gallon for the, the capacity used. And then at the bottom, again, distribution, transmission, you know, we're looking at with this, you know, the total cost of these is 7.75 million dollars. But, you know, some of this is going to be used by existing development. So we have actually shown that the growth cost on, in that right column, and so the capacity fees only include, you know, about 3.5 million dollars worth of distribution and transmission line improvements. That the rest of that would be covered by, you know, user fees or, you know, another revenue source. But it's important to know that, you know, with the distribution transmission lines, you know, we're only covering the growth-related costs and not the, the total cost. So with those, the cost would be $1.30 per gallon. So slide six, these would be the proposed fees. So you can see at the, the top left, we have that cost per gallon related to wells, storage and booster stations, and then distribution and transmission lines. And so it's saying that, you know, future development should pay $2.83 per gallon of capacity. Now, we talked about 309 gallons per day from a single-family unit. That's gonna be our base meter size, and so to calculate the fees, all we're doing is saying $2.83 times 309 gallons times a capacity ratio. So for the, the base meter or the single-family fee, that would be $874. As you go to a, a larger meter size, you're just applying that capacity ratio. So, you know, a 1.5-inch meter, the calculation is $2.83 times 309 gallons times 3.33, and that proposed fee would be $2,912. So currently, you assess fees outside the city limits that are higher than would be charged inside the city limits. With the proposed capacity fees, that would go away. It would not vary based on whether you're inside the city or outside the city. So are there any questions related to the water fees before we move on to the sewer fees?
I hear no questions. Please continue.
All right, so next up, you know, the wastewater factors. You know, with this, we looked at sewer billing data, and so the average residential customer generates 170 gallons of wastewater flows per day. So again, we're gonna use this as our base meter. And so looking at, you know, the projected development and then the, the flows generated by different types of development, we're saying that, you know, there's a 10-year increase of about 751,000 gallons. So again, we would just wanna make sure that we have, you know, enough capacity to service that 751,000 gallons related to future development. So these are the, you know, the cost components. So we have treatment facilities. So you, you have existing capacity in Hilltop and Downtown Treatment Plants. So we've done here, as you've said, all right, that the total plant investment related to your two wastewater treatment plants is about 54.2 million dollars. That has capacity of 5.72 million gallons. So the cost per gallon of capacity is $9.47 over 10 years, you know, with 751,000 gallons of additional flows, that would generate revenue of about 7.1 million dollars to be used towards growth-related, you know, costs. Next up, the interceptor facilities. This has a, you know, the, the planned interceptors have a total cost of about 11.8 million dollars. We divide that by the, the 10-year increase in gallons, and so interceptor facilities have a cost per gallon of capacity of $15.70. We do need to include a credit, because currently your, your sewer rates include debt service, and so we wanna make sure that we're not charging future development once through their sewer rates and then a second time through the capacity fee. So what you see here is, you know, principal related to Hilltop and Downtown debt. Basically, what we're doing is just saying, hey, whatever your principal payment is for the year, we wanna divide it by the total gallons of sewer flows to come up with a credit per gallon. And so what you see at the bottom right-hand corner is a credit of $6.15 per gallon related to wastewater revenue. So just like we did with water, we take the total cost per gallon of capacity, which is $19.02. We multiply that by the, the single-family flows, which would be 170, and then by the capacity fee, so the capacity ratio. So for a single-family dwelling, the proposed fee is $3,233. Again, as you go to a larger-sized meter, you just multiply by that capacity ratio to get to those, those larger meter fees. Currently, you charge $91 per fixture, and the, the average single-family fee is about $1,500, assuming that you have 16 fixtures per single-family fee. So there is an increase with these proposed fees compared to your existing fee. This just shows the summary of the proposed water and wastewater fees. What I've done on the side is show you, you know, currently, a single-family dwelling would pay $2,500 for the water connection fee and about $1,500 for the wastewater development fee. So that's, you know, $3,956. Under the proposed capacity fees, a single-family home would pay $4,107. So an increase of $151. So are there any questions related to the water or sewer fees?
Are there any questions? No, there are no questions. Please continue.
Okay. So this just shows the adoption timeline. You know, today, November 16th, it would be the public hearing, the city council. If you adopt tonight, then the fees would go into effect on December 20th. All right, and that is my last slide, so I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Ben. So quickly, I'd like to cover the, a change in the ordinance. So currently, we charge connection fees for on the water side of the house, and a component of that connection fee, a portion of that connection fee are, is related to basically service line costs to the city. And so, so when a developer puts in a subdivision, then when a contractor or a developer comes, sorry, when a, when a developer puts in a subdivision and they install those service lines, and then the developer or the contractor then files a building permit in that subdivision, we will typically give them a small credit, because the city's not having to go in and install those service lines. So because the capacity fee has absolutely nothing to do with service line installation, you see the methodology is different, then we eliminated that credit. However, in our water rate study that we're currently undergoing, we will be looking at those service line installation costs and also the credit that a developer and a contractor should receive because of those when they install those. So that'll be coming to you in the next couple of months. But I wanted to point that out as you reviewed that ordinance prior to, prior to the action taken this evening. And so that's it for me.
Thank you, Director Moline. At this point, I think we're scheduled to have a public hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and ask if there are any persons in the audience that would like to address the council regarding this issue. I'll ask one more time. Okay. Hearing, no, no response. I am going to close the public hearing and move forward to ask for a motion regarding ordinance 1930 regarding water and wastewater capacity fees.
I have a question for Director Moline, just for clarification.
Okay.
If I may.
Please go ahead.
Thanks. So you said that the credit goes back for the service line, the credit goes back to the developer. If the developer and the contractor are not one in the same, the contractor does not get the benefit of the credit? The contractor would get the benefit of the credit. Okay, even, even though it may not be one in the same? Correct. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilor Walker.
I'll second. I'll second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Samley. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Next order of business is new business. And we are going to have a public hearing in consideration of resolution fifty-three eighty-two approving the abandonment or vacation of a portion of the right of way for East Pine Street adjacent to one oh seven East Spring Street. A request from Lori Barthlow, who is the applicant and adjoining property owner for the vacation of a portion of the right of way for East Pine Street adjacent to the property line of one oh seven East Spring Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on October twelfth, twenty twenty-one and voted five zero to, uh, recommend approval of this, um, abandonment of the subject right of way. The commission also recommended that twenty-five hundred dollars be accepted by the city council for the right of way. Staff recommends approval. Good evening, Mr. Ruggles.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this is the abandonment case A B twenty-one zero zero six. It's a request to, uh, vacate a portion of the right of way for East Pine Street. Uh, the applicant is Lori, uh, Boss Barthlow, who is the abutting property owner. Uh, the area, uh, to be considered for abandonment is twenty-eight by fifty or fourteen hundred square feet. And it's located at the, um, rear property line of one oh seven East Spring Street. Currently, there is a detached, uh, garage and carport that is located partly within the right of way. Uh, the area generally is zoned, um, T four N, which is the transit zone, uh, for neighborhood. The general plan designation in, in, in the area is media, uh, intermediate density residential nine to sixteen units per acre. This is the parcel map of the, of the location. The red box that you see on the map is the, uh, subject right of way, uh, being requested to be abandoned. And aerial view of the site. Uh, first street is to the, uh, to the west or to the left, and second street is to the, uh, to the right or to the east. The residence on the adjoining property dates to nineteen nineteen. According to the applicant, the garage and carport was constructed sometime prior to nineteen sixty. Uh, this was part of the original incorporated area of Kingman nineteen fifty-two. Uh, ten years later, nineteen sixty-two, the council passed resolution one eight two in which the council agreed to, uh, have the city sell these twenty-eight foot, foot wide strips of the right of way for Pine Street, uh, for all the properties adjoining, uh, the south side of Pine between First and Third Streets. This was conditioned on those enter, those owners entering into a sale of the right of way and paying for individual surveys and legal fees. However, in this particular case, the, there's no record of a deed conveying this portion of the Pine Street right of way to the owner of one oh seven East Spring Street at the time. Physical characteristics, the slope in this area is generally from, slopes down from the east to the west. It's outside the flood zone. Uh, there are no, you, known utilities within this portion of the, uh, right of way. Uh, Pine Street has a seventy-two foot wide right of way from First to, to Third Streets, except for this portion next to, uh, one oh seven Spring Street, which is a hundred feet wide. The street is per, uh, improved with curb gut, and gutter, but no sidewalk in this location. And those improvements are located outside the right of way being considered for abandonment. Here we have a couple of photos of the site. Everything to the, to the right of the red line that you can see on the, on the photos is, um, the area that would be abandoned, um, including part of, part of where the garage currently sits. The area to the, to the left is, uh, existing right of way would be maintained, uh, should this area be abandoned. The site was posted in September and October, uh, twenty-first. Public notices were published in the minor. We sent letters to all property owners within three hundred feet of the site. Uh, there was one letter in support received from a neighboring property owner. Uh, there were no objections from any, uh, departments or, or agencies, uh, in regards to this, um, this proposal. So as I mentioned, the, uh, this, there's an existing garage and carport in, in the property. The applicant has proposed to add a shade structure, and that's pretty much what spurred this, um, discovery that the existing garage lay within, partly within the right of way. So the abandonment has been requested. Uh, as I mentioned, in nineteen sixty-two, the city council did agree at that time to sell twenty-eight foot wide, uh, wide strips of Pine Street to the adjoining property owners for a large sum of ten dollars, uh, of, for every fifty front feet, which works out to about ninety-one dollars in today's money. However, there's no record of a deed being, uh, recorded for this particular property. The streets, street policy and the state statutes govern the prop, procedures for vaca, vaca, vacating a right of way. One of the requirements is that no utilities could be within the portion that is being considered to be for abandonment. And that is the case for this, uh, this portion of, of the right of way. Also required is that the council accept an amount that's, uh, from the abutting property owner that's deemed to be commensurate with its value. Uh, in this case, the, uh, applicant has offered twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, for the right of way, which is a dollar seventy-eight a square foot. Recent abandonments of other rights of way and, and also right of way sales that have occurred, uh, in the last year. There have been two in Rancho Santa Fe for the walkway, two, uh, walkway parcels. Those were dollars fourteen a square foot. And there was a, a needed right of way which was sold under a different statute, uh, for twenty-three cents a, a square foot. Um, also, the state statute states that, um, if, if a right of way is abandoned, each owner takes to the center of the railway being abandoned, however, in this case, the only owner is the applicant, so they would get the entire right of way. Should it be abandoned. Uh, so the commission reviewed this request on October twelfth. They recommended approval and recommended acceptance of the twenty-five hundred dollars for the right of way. And that, uh, recommendation is reflected in resolution fifty-three eighty-two, and staff recommends approval. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions, Council? No. Apparently, there are no questions, Mr. Ruggles.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I do see the, uh, applicant has, has come. I didn't know if you wanted to fill out a form or speak to the council regarding this.
I'm sorry, I'm very late. And if I had answered any questions, I could try and answer.
But I, I'm not sure if there are any questions. That was a very good presentation, and, and I think we all had time to look at it beforehand also. So this is a public hearing, and, uh, so I'm going to open this public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the, uh, room that would like to address the council regarding resolution fifty-three eighty-two. I'll ask one more time. Anyone want to ad- address the council regarding fifty-three eighty-two? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And now I would, uh, ask for a motion regarding this resolution.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilor Sal, Samley, and the second by, by Councilor Walker. And is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Thank you. Any opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Done. So, we are through with new business, and we'll move on to department reports. And well, our first report, uh, is the Northern Arizona Fire District Agreement Update.
Thank you, Mayor.
Manager Foggan.
We, um, had a discussion about this, I wanna say, almost exactly six months ago. Uh, we've, we're in a test program, uh, providing leadership for, uh, what is known now as NAFID or the, um, Northern Arizona Fire District. And, uh, is that, we had a two-year agreement, um, with them to provide leadership and help them move their fire department forward with, uh, us providing leadership in that. And so, um, we came to you and asked for a little bit of an extension, uh, six months. And so we are prepared to present kind of our evaluation of the, of the test program and, uh, tell you kind of what our plans are moving forward. So I've asked Chief Rhodes, uh, to put together a presentation and walk you through, um, what we've been able to accomplish and what our plans are moving forward.
Thank you, and welcome, Chief Rhodes.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try to make this, uh, uh, short as I can, but I think there's a lot of information to share, um, as, as we move through this. So timeline, I kinda wanted to share this just for a little perspective. If we go back, um, we entered this agreement originally on August sixth, two thousand nineteen. Of course, we started earlier that year and trying to negotiate, what does that look like for management services? And we really used the, the model that Flagstaff and Summit had. And, uh, that chief and I worked, uh, close, Chief Gaylord over there as he came and presented to council. So that model's what we really, really followed. And, and really what that showed is with all the other agreements that we do have, automatic aid, I G As, from hydrant services to automatic aid, a lot of other things. This one allowed me, uh, and our staff to serve in leadership roles and management roles for them. And essentially, myself be, being that fire chief for them as well. We did the feasibility study, um, earlier this year, uh, finished up June twenty-eighth. And really that, that feasibility study was a com- combined effort to see what this pilot program really looked like. The first two years were the pilots really evaluate and see how it would work. And, and overall, huge success. When the feasibility study came back, it told us several things. And so we, we entered into what, what I call the First Amendment, uh, kind of a extension, a six-month extension to really look at the feasibility study. What's it say? And part of that, part of that feasibility study, let me go back, was each of us shared the cost of that, uh, as that partnership. The city paid ten thousand, the, the district paid ten thousand to see what that looked like. So a combined effort on that, uh, to show what that looked like. Some of the accomplishments, um, we met all the obligations as we outlined in that I G A. And they were extensive. Anything from strategic planning and those type of things that we really laid out, not just management services, but, uh, across the board. Improved services and reducing liability. And when we talk about reducing liability, we're talking about some of the fiscal liabilities that they had, and which I'll get into in a moment, some of that. Really, the structure, uh, that we implemented mirrors the Kingman Fire Department. We do in the district, uh, same with policies and everything. I often use the term pulling the sheet across the rest of the bed, cuz that's exactly what we did. We wanted to mirror organizations, uh, that way we're operating on the, under the same set of guidelines, same policies, procedures. And it just made it easier, because we have a lot of part-time personnel that work in both organizations, and it was seamless. It really was, in, in doing some of those things. But it was easier for us. They experienced, uh, experienced cultural shift through our expectations, transparency, and then accountability. Not just managerial accountability, but personal accountability as well, that, that, that we did. Part of that was a rebranding, and those expectations that come from that. And that rebranding effort didn't come from us. If you recall, that was Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District number one. Whenever the last elections occurred, there was some issues around that, which I'll get into pretty soon. Um, and the members out there, part of that cultural shift was owning that organization. They changed it to, to that emblem and everything that you see today of Northern Arizona Fire District, which is, which is quite an accomplishment in itself in a short amount of time, given the window that we did it in. So that in itself was, uh, uh, was an accomplishment. Change was difficult. I'll be honest, it was difficult, uh, coming in from the outside. The difference in Flagstaff and Summit's model is they worked collaboratively on a lot of things. Uh, the fire chief, Mark Gaylord, did a lot of consulting and other things, uh, for Summit prior to that. So he knew that organization. When we opened the doors, it was something to see for the first time. And, uh, I think Jack and I had a lot of discussions on how we would do certain things and some surprises as well. Uh, because, uh, change was difficult. So some of the financial accomplishments, which I think in itself was a, a big, uh, heavy lift, only the current board members and directors are on bank accounts. Something that we kinda take for granted, and Tina would laugh about, but it was a thing, a, a serious thing. Closing pass-through bank accounts at Mojave State Banks that really board members didn't know anything about. Again, something we take for granted, but can cause some serious, uh, financial risk and liabilities. Established process for out-of-district billing and collections, wildland billing, established payroll and personnel tracking processes through a, a program called Alatech. It's a staffing software that we use here in the city. That just makes things easier, because, again, we don't think about those things. But whenever you're doing payroll on a desk calendar, that leads to some human error in there. And, and that was a big liability that we wanted to take out, evaluating all expenditures and accounts. Um, we're currently going through the un, un, unfunded debt process with Stifle, similar to what we did here in the city. So that actually, uh, goes tomorrow and should be completed in the, in the next month, which, in comparison, we saved twenty-two-ish million. Um, we'll save about one fi- one point five out there, which is significant for the district, um, to do that. And all three of our audits, audit processes were successful. We just finished our, our third one out there. And something that I'm very proud about is correcting some of those areas that, that we get positive audits out there. Fleet and facilities, all kinds of accomplishments, everything from establishing a, a fleet maintenance program. Again, something we take for granted here in the city, but, again, they have a couple apparatus out there that, on the front line, they run a lot. And they're out of service a lot because of a lack of maintenance programs, which in turns put the wrong units responding to incidents. And so those are some of the things that, that we dealt with. New portable radios, uh, can't talk about enough about getting those on a grant and implementing that, just communications as a whole. Um, many of you have seen the remodel of twenty-six hundred Northern, um, and completing that, that process up there, which was a twelve-year process. If you go back and look when that building was originally attained, and, and to see that through fruition, when we first took it over, was when there was a set of plans that had ninety-two marks on it and had to be, the process had to be stopped and restarted. And we successfully got it to, to opening earlier this year. Typing our apparatus, and right now we're facilitating the sale of the old Fire Station Thirty-One and the administration building. And we have an offer on it right now that should sell in the next couple of months or close in the next couple of months. So we're proud of that, obviously, because that goes right back in their capital, uh, uh, capital fund. Something small like extrication equipment, things that you don't think much about, but using antiquated equipment for extrication that when you show up, you know your equipment works. And time after time, this got moved way up on the list, because we had several, uh, incidents where things didn't work. And we just can't have that. Training, uh, everybody knows, uh, my approach to training and auditing files, make sure we have certified personnel across the, across the board, from newest firefighter to their oldest incumbent members, uh, members that had been out there for a while and, and going through those, uh, driver training, uh, officer development, incident command training. All those things were very, very high on our list. Things like G I S review and, and run cards, run cars in a dispatch center tell you what to send on what type of incidents. Going through those so we knew that we had the right apparatus going to the right place. And one of those was the airport. Changing right away after this was taken over was, Kingman had very little to do with the airport and industrial pop, complex before we took this management agreement over. And I think we'd all agree, there's a, there's a ha, uh, a, a lot of target hazards out there, a lot of jobs out there that obviously affect the city of Kingman. So changing that for both the airport and industrial complex to where it's a joint response, uh, right away, that we're getting Kingman units on scene as well, was very important to us. Establishing promotional processes and, and some of those best practices that we had to have in all the disciplines, fire, EMS, hazmat, tech rescue, all those across the board just wasn't in place. And I can say today that they are, and it's a, and it's a different workforce out there, but it's, it's something that, that we worked hard on. P P extractors and drying racks, again, we've talked a lot here in the city of Kingman about our health and wellness, employee well-being. And this goes right into that because of the carcinogens and things that firefighters are around, and that long-term chronic exposure takes that out. Challenges and concerns. And if we go back to the feasibility study, political stability is a, is a tremendous factor. Yeah, it is. And it's, it's, uh, combined with Valley Vista level of service demands, uh, that's, that's, didn't start two and a half years ago when I took, uh, when we took this over. That will always be there. Uh, it does create some challenges, I would say, that are, that are well-known. Future fis- fiscal commitments, um, they have some capital needs out there. Two frontline apparatus that are, they, they need to be replaced today. The boards are aware of that, but it's also timing and how we do some of those things and do some of those. Capital improvement planning, again, some of those... Capital improvement planning, again, some of those, even their facilities. We remodeled Station 31 out there at 2600 Northern, but they have other needs at other stations as well. And that's a huge quality of life, safety issue in some of those facilities that we had to talk about. Some of the feasibility study recommendations, some of them simply didn't work due to the political instability. Because one thing you can't do in a district is bind a future board into those decisions that we make an agreement today. A new board can't be bound to that. So that makes some political instability, that's very difficult for us. The perception of value for management services to the $530,000. And although I explained that previously, that's a snapshot. But obviously, the district really benefited from these services. That we did this for a little while here and this over here. There was no way to tell going into that what exactly the level of services and what exactly we need to do. And I think we accomplished that and I would say adapt and overcome in a lot of ways to make it happen, we did. And our staff here was incredible throughout, from battalion chiefs down to inspectors and fire marshals that lent a hand during this. Staffing's a concern there. It's hard to draw out there. Recruitment and the fire services as a whole, I think public safety as a whole is experiencing this throughout. So we have recruitment and retention problems in ALS. ALS is an issue not only in the district, but across, again, the state of Arizona. The number of paramedics is a concern. And when you have some extended response times out into remote areas of the district, that's a challenge, that's a challenge. So retaining our current advanced life support or paramedics is a challenge in itself. But getting that response out there is the other part of that. And of course, personnel safety, that's always a concern. Whenever you have staffing levels and some of the needs that the district has, that's always a concern for us. So to wrap it up, I have a couple slides of summary. The level of service to the citizens of NAFD has increased, I don't think that can be argued at all. I think we can always do better, just like we talk about here in Kingman. We can always do better and continuously improve that. The liabilities have gone down. I will stand by that. Our fiscal practices and just some of our insurance and risk, workers' comp, we've reduced that risk at the district immensely. We've put in a structure that allows them to be a standalone. Everything from their, the staffing levels to instructors, to training coordinators, those things allow them to do business at a different level. We've instilled a higher level of professionalism, customer service and personal accountability. I think all those are very important. If you look at the level of service Kingman provides, it's customer service and it's safety. Those are the things we preach every day, every meeting, everything we do, customer service and safety. And they preach that out there as well, and that's a huge thing for us. Overall, we got board and community support. There's been a lot of discussion here lately with the de-annexation or the Valley Vista forming its own fire district. And you saw in that, there was a lot of opposition to that. A lot of people in the Valley Vista area really rose up and came to board meetings and supervisor meetings, things like that, which showed there was a lot of support. The politics at NAFD and Valley Vista are extremely difficult and they don't provide a stable foundation. They are difficult to deal with. I think you've been exposed to that a little bit. And sometimes, I know we have, and I know Thursday night at the board meeting, I will as well. As I said earlier, they benefited more than the original IGA stated. Again, we threw out the term of 155,000, which sounded great at the time, but we really had no idea when we opened those doors, what it would really look like out there. And again, we made it happen. We never saw a lower level of service in Kingman, just didn't happen. We increased that by that partnership and doing that long-term. I think as we move forward, I think there are some opportunities to look at the feasibility study still. The Levine model is a good model, and I'll go back to the feasibility study, is basically where the district would basically give the city the money and we would run the district as the City of Kingman. I think that's a viable model, but you've got to have some political stability to do that. And City Manager Foggan and I have talked a lot about that. If you had political stability, that would be the number one thing, benefit both organizations today, benefit this community in the biggest way. The priority during this transition, obviously, is remain on Kingman and our members. As I transition out, this, my recommendation was different a month ago. Our recommendation, and I had the IGA already rewritten to where it was my plan to kind of move forward with an assistant chief out there, hiring assistant chief with some board experience, some district experience, and then continue to run it and bring that proposal before council to move forward. But in this time of transition, and I'm not saying it's about one person, but in this case, I think with some new members in different places here, our focus has to be on Kingman and what we're doing. We've set them up very well to do that. We're working on a transition plan with the board of directors out there. As I said earlier, this agreement expires December 31. And it's my recommendation in talking to City Manager Foggan that we let it expire at that time and we help them transition back to a standalone organization. We'll maintain all the agreements with them. I personally think it's the best thing at this time, long-term. I think it's better if we absolutely work together. There, I've spoken to their board chair and their clerk, and although they don't like this, they understand. They understand, but are helping them with transition and them be able to work out with us side by side as partner agencies. That will never go away, can't. We're just too close for that. So at that time, I'd take any questions that I can answer.
Are there questions for Chief Rhodes? I'd just like to ask, you've kind of addressed it, but I know that a lot of relationships have been built, agreements have been made, systems have been intertwined in a sense for response. And so do you see this going forward as something that they're dedicated to continuing also?
I think so. Obviously, the board sees the benefit in what we've done. They see the foundation we've set, they see a difference in the level of service, something as simple as what we're sending, what they're sending on responses on a daily basis, that doesn't change. Now, again, that goes back to political stability. Elections 2022 in November could change and unravel all that as it would have in November of last year. And it was well-known what was going to happen. They were very public about that, just like they were in the de-annexation discussions and things like that. So while they maintain political stability, I think things run just like they do. I think the relationships and agreements that are in place are very solid for automatic aid, mutual aid, the training foundation of them, NAFD coming to our facilities and training on an almost weekly basis now is the way it has to be. And I think both organizations buy into that and it's something that I don't think stops anytime soon.
Well, I know that, you know, from our perspective as a city, this has really been a positive impact for our airport and our industrial park and for the responses, well, the responses everywhere really, outside the city limits. So that is good to hear.
Well, and especially, you bring up that in particular. We have a vested interest in the industrial park with all the jobs and everything out there. I think that, we can talk about all the target hazards out there of high risk, but that's as much risk to our community as anything. So it's in our best interest to respond and be on scene in our primary responses. We just have to, that's the way it has to be. And our staff is well aware of that and the things that we've been able to do out there from pre-planning aspects, to get to know those facilities more in the last two and a half years has been tremendous. And I don't think that stops by any means.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just maybe have a couple of concerns and questions and just some things that I want to throw out into the universe. So, Board of Director elections, you said coming up in 2022. What is the turnover of that board? How many outgoing, how many staying?
There are two seats coming up.
Okay, and they're a board of?
Five.
Five, okay, so we have three consistent?
Yes.
Members that will move forward.
If you were looking at it, and I'll probably speak a little more open than I should, that would be a split of two to one. That's really in favor of what we're doing.
Okay, all right, and their terms are how long? Two years?
Two years, yes. Four years, I'm sorry, four years, four years, elections offset every two.
Okay, all right. I mean, obviously, what you've done, what everybody's done, you know, pulled them out of a pretty deep, dark place. So much appreciation for that. My concern is the sustainability of it all. And, you know, what's your opinion in how things moving forward, the sustainability of it? And are we going to be in this place in, I mean, get your crystal ball out because I'm going to ask you, are we going to be in this place in, you know, five years where we're going to open up the doors and have to help them again?
Well, I would say it all depends on elections. There is, if you were familiar with it, the de-annexation process went to the board supervisors and the board, one of the board supervisors recommended this isn't the way to fix it. You need to go win your election, if that's what you want. And that's concerning. As with any emotional crisis like this or where people are actively involved, they stay active. And that's always a concern. It's been a concern in the last two and a half years because with that political instability, it's hard to plan for next year. It was hard to plan past December 1 of 2021 or 2020 before the elections. So that's concerning. But I do think the relationships that have been built between our staff and theirs, our members and theirs, I think goes on. And I think a lot of people are, a lot of the hiring practices that we've used, we've hired good people. And I stand by that foundation that it all starts with those people and those hiring practices. And they're going to do the right thing. Doesn't matter what's going on up here, they're going to do the right thing. And that's a thing in itself, something to be proud of. And I think something that we have to rely on moving forward, that they do stand up for what's right.
And I'd just tag onto that, using the crystal ball is, my hope is that the district learns from this and continues to be professional and safe and train their people and hire amazing people. The thing that we can't control, and Chief Rhodes and I have talked about this extensively, is that the piece that we don't control, as much as we would like to, is the fact that the board has an option to leave the contract at any time. Moving forward, it is going to have a successful model is going to require us to invest in an employee to provide day-to-day leadership for that organization. If we left the agreement or if we moved in, went from a pilot program to a permanent program. So we put, that would be our employee. It would be a City of Kingman employee providing that leadership on a day-to-day basis. The board sends a letter saying that we're leaving the organization, we're leaving the agreement and our organization's going to be a standalone. We end up with an extra employee that we end up more than likely not having room for. So there's some investment that we would be making that stability-wise is, turns out to be not great for the department and not great for the city as well. So the, as Chief Rhodes talked about, the political instability, if you take that piece out, the model works. And we see it working in Flagstaff. And we wish that the model was a more stable model because there are benefits. And we've seen improvement in working together. But we have dedicated time to creating and handing off to a group of young people, I will say fairly young people in the district, to be able to continue that professionalism and safety that they've been learning under our tutelage.
Thank you. The last thing I'll say is, I look at this as a half a million dollar investment that the city did for, you know, our sister department. So, you know, I look at this as, you know, we've got to protect our investment. So forgive me if I'm overly cautious about the recommendation that you made, you know. Financial solvency of the organization, do you see it viable to do the things that they want to do moving forward?
Yes, so there's a plan in place, there are several that can work. I mean, and that's part of our assisting in the transition from us to standalone, back to standalone. And again, not taking things off the table in the future if they come back to us. I hope it's under good conditions with more stability, things like that. I think that's definitely a thing that we have to look at. And I think that investment that we've made over the last couple of years, again, that 530, as we've talked about it, it's a snapshot where you're getting this today and this today. And okay, we're done with that, let's move. So, but the thing that has been created is a more stable organization. I can list, I could make a hundred-point PowerPoint or a hundred-page PowerPoint that has accomplishments on it, down to the smallest details. And I think that, our investment in that and the relationship we have with them, I would say is about better than ever. Because when we first took it over internally, we had a lot of our members who were very vocal about, we shouldn't do that, who are part-timeing out there, who are working out there alongside them as serving as officers on those trucks. That's tremendous. And there was, I championed this right from the start from a safety aspect. And I think that we're better, better decision-making, better accountability, all those things that are, the culture change. And I think that progresses. So financial stability, I think the financial stability is there, especially with things that are working legislatively that allows the districts to increase that rate over the next couple of years from, right now their tax rate's at 3.12, allows them to go up to 3.5. Now, there's some concern about raising it that high, who's going to pay? But there's great collection rates out there. And that also goes with some advertisement and marketing of, here's why we need to increase it. And so that's part of the plan and process that moves forward. So I think all those things are in place and they're well aware of what the future holds and can hold. Because I think we've improved that a lot in the last couple of years.
Thank you. I do, I appreciate this very much, job well done. I am sure they see the value that we had to bring to the table. So I just, I hope we're not in a situation.
Me and Manager Foggan have talked extensively about exactly that. And hopefully, that's, and that's the hope. And the relationship, I hope, extends to where we're not again.
Thank you again.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, please go ahead, Counselor Staley.
So I am relieved to hear Chief Rhodes' recommendation. When I heard the chief was leaving, my first thought was, oh no. And my second thought was, what's going to happen to Northern Arizona Fire District? You know, I was reluctant in the beginning to even approve this, really based on their political instability, which I think is putting it lightly. I mean, as a council member, it was strange to hear a group of people come to every single council meeting to talk about how much they hated their fire district. I mean, we are used to, in the City of Kingman, everyone loving the fire department. And it is very different once you, you know, get into that Northern Arizona Fire District range. And ultimately, I approved this because I did believe that Chief Rhodes, he could handle it. And he was going to make our city safer, you know, by improving their district. And that's not to say that I don't think that the incoming chief could handle it. But I do think that's an awful lot to be a new chief and then to take on the problems of that district, especially with an election coming up. So I hope that they can still deliver the same type of service. I think that we should be very cautious about how they're overseeing the industrial park and the airport. And if we don't see those levels where we would want them to be, we need to take some action to get that under city control and where our fire department's overseeing it. to get that under city, um, control and, and where our fire department's overseeing it. But, but I have to tell you, I'm really relieved when you got to the part of your presentation where you said, let's not keep this going.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. Any other vice mayor?
Yes, um, thanks Chief for all you've done and, uh, I, I agree with a lot of all that's been said. I, interesting, I was just thinking about all this. You mentioned an important fact that a lot of our members, our firefighters now are serving part-time.
Yeah.
I would think that would have a stabilizing influence in the future to come on that district.
So, um, absolutely. Um, and we did it for a couple of reasons. It's a young organization, it really is. I needed, um, uh, some leadership on a day-to-day basis in those, in those fire stations as mentors and, and things like that. We actually did a couple of things in the budget to, to raise the amount that we're spending on a P O C to where even our, some of our captains are, are serving out there in, in a captain role. Um, because at one point, and I won't take anything away from a couple of individuals out there, but when you got a six-month firefighter that's riding in the captain's seat and making decisions on a given date, that's not a good day. Uh, and now to have my officers or the Kingman officers and even our engineers and firefighters out there, uh, that's a, that is a good thing, it's a great thing. And same with them coming in, working the N A F D personnel coming and working on a daily basis here as P O Cs, as part-timers, eh, it's tremendous. Eh, eh, that in itself, that, that mesh, and again, some people were very, very adamant. We came from there, we don't, there's a reason we left and now they're back and they're running trucks and they're kinda smiling, having fun. I give a couple of them grief because I'll see them in the N A F D hat some days and, uh, I'm like, I never thought I'd see that, but it's a, it's a good thing. They just smile and, and, uh, they may say a couple of things under their breath, but, but I can't share here. But, it's a good thing, it's a great thing. That mentoring and adult, being the adult out there has been, been a good, good move for us.
I know this is looking into the crystal ball. Again, do you foresee this contin- continuing? I hope it would.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. I think especially with the, the recommendations that we're gonna make for some of the transition, uh, again, I've talked to Chairman Bailey. Obviously, it's gonna be their decision and, and the direction they go with the chief. Um, but I think we've got a couple, a couple of good viable options, uh, for them that I think, um, that work pretty well. Now, there's, there's a learning curve with, with any new, with any new position and that one in itself has a tremendous learning curve. Um, but I think, I think we can provide a couple of good options for them, so.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Chief, based on your comments about the fiscal, uh, components of this agreement, eh, as we transition and if the council approves, uh, ending the program, the pilot program, uh, is there a fiscal transition or do they have in place the capacity to, to manage the fiscal?
They do and, and the way the budget's been managed out there, they have that capacity. So, the basically, eh, another part of that agreement, the original agreement, uh, was to replace the cost of a fire chief, uh, the salary and benefits roughly of what they could afford at that time. And that was kind of where we kinda worked for, uh, eh, with the interim chief at the time and City Manager Foggan. That's what we really focused on was that amount. So, ours would end December thirty-first and they would just, whatever, whatever move they made would, would make would pick up from there. But there's enough room in their budget to handle, handle it fiscally as well, so.
Good.
Yep.
Well, I had my great appreciation for your work with us in Kingman and
Thank you.
you've taken us so far
I appreciate that.
and built a great team. And we will certainly miss you and the city and, and, uh, truly, uh, appreciate your service.
I appreciate that. It's bittersweet. Um, as I say, I owe a lot to the City of Kingman. Uh, it's been a, a great honor working with City Manager Foggan. Uh, I would say the same about Police Chief, uh, Cooper, but, uh, no, it has been. Uh, that's, eh, I, I did, uh, my, my time downstairs and that's, the relationships that you build here in any community is, is part of the, that's the hard thing to leave. But, as I've told many people, uh, getting closer to my kids and my grandbaby, uh, not twenty-one of them, but just one at this time, uh, is, is fantastic, so.
Yeah, we wish you and your family the very best.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, may I have a moment?
Uh, yes, is that Counselor De- Nelson?
It is Nelson, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Rhodes knows exactly how much I adore him on many, many levels. But I am going to say outright, I'm frustrated and saddened because, um, I feel a little like Kingman kinda got pushed to the side pretty quickly and I'm, I'm terrified for now that we've been here, we've watched, we've observed, we know and, and they don't have the strong leadership that they need and they're being left in a lurch and I feel bad for them and I'm saddened by that. Um, I just don't like leaving them like this and unfortunately, oh, we're not gonna be able to do anything about that. So, we've, we've, we've literally said, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna take you in and we're gonna help you and we're gonna struggle with you and we're gonna make you great and then we're gonna drop you. And that, that's not cool. So, while I will always love you, that will always just hurt a little. Um, and I think that hurts for, Northern's not ours, but you know what? We make it ours because we know we can make them better and we have that opportunity. And now we're just sitting out here. So, I'm, I'm frustrated by that. But, I understand grandbabies, everybody knows. I got three and I adore them and would do anything for them. So, I get where you're at and I love you guys to pieces for that.
Thank you.
Chief Rhodes, nothing is certain in this world, right?
Yep.
And I think at this point, both, both participants in these agreements have opportunities to forge a new type of relationship. I think they know now, uh, so much more than, uh, in terms of good policies, procedure, systems, everything. And, and so my hope is that, that our people that are here and their staff and leadership will honor that progress that has been made and work really hard to maintain it. I, I know none of us can know that and I kind of, I feel some, the frustration too.
I
but you can understand all of us having, all of us having these feelings.
I, I can't say that I haven't, but.
But overwhelmingly, it is one of gratitude for what you have been able to accomplish, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, now, now we move on to the city trees report.
Yes, um, so, uh, Counselor Staley had asked a question about, uh, re- or asked, not a question, but asked for a report on trees, city trees. And so, uh, Mike has been doing, Mike Mearsman, our Parks and Recreation Director, has been doing a whole bunch of, uh, research and, um, work on this. And so, I've asked him if he would please, um, walk us through what we do with city trees.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, um, I had a very concise presentation until two weeks ago. I went to the Arizona Parks and Recreation Conference and the second to the last session that I attended was a two-hour session on trees. So, um, I don't know if you wanna stop and get a bite to eat before I get started.
No chance.
It really was, it was the second to last session and it was excellent. And they had a great presenter, but really at those sessions, as you know, more importantly, you get a lot of good information from the other people in the room. And so, it was really a very good session. But, and I've got a lot of information in here from that too. So, basically, um, we have over two thousand trees on the properties that our department maintains. And I'm gonna talk basically about positives about trees and challenges about trees, which are many in our area. Um, air quality obviously is, trees are very good for air quality. They produce oxygen and, uh, another thing they do, they take the carbon dioxide out of the air and I didn't realize this, that fifty percent of the weight of the tree is carbon, which I, I knew it was a lot, but I didn't know it was fifty percent of the weight of the tree. So, that was an interesting fact. And also, um, energy reduction, obviously there are natural shade. And also, um, three trees strategically planted can, uh, reduce your energy consumption in a building by fifty percent. Another interesting fact. Um, problems with, uh, Arizona faces with trees, drought. The past several years that we've been in, s- pretty serious drought and trees require substantial amounts of water. And also heat, when the temperature reaches a hundred and ten, it's damaging to the leaves, which negatively impacts the photosynthesis and helps the tree, um, that photosynthesis makes the tree grow and live, so. Um, most of the trees in our area are not native to our area, which is, um, these are some of the trees we have in our area and none of them are native. And that's a challenge too, like I said, the tree, the trees that aren't native to our area are used to having lots of water and they don't have that there unless we supply it. Um, native trees, basically, the native trees look like this and we don't give them a very good opportunity to survive because we trim them all up and those, the trees grow their limbs to protect the roots. So, we don't really give them a good opportunity to survive. Some of the challenges with trees also are improperly planted trees. Um, and also poor, poor stock, eh, if, if you don't get good stock in the trees you're planting, it's a challenge too. But, the planting depth of a tree, a lot of trees are planted too low and they don't live. They'll, they may live for ten or fifteen years and then die. So, I mean, it's a challenge and they also, if you plant them too high, it's not good either, so. And they also girdling roots where the roots just keep growing around. When you take a, uh, tree out of the bucket to plant it, if you don't slice the roots, they'll have a tendency to just grow in a circle and kill the tree. Um, the arbor ties a lot of times aren't removed. And with the way we, eh, with our irrigation the way it is, we surface water to keep the grass in all these areas alive and it's not really enough water for the trees and the trees are fighting for the water. So, it's a, does, doesn't give it a good root system for the tree. And trees planted out of place, this is a good, uh, slide of, uh, area where the trees are planted right by the lights on our basketball court. So, you know, the lights don't work very good with the trees growing up in them. The trees planted under power lines, I've got some other in the next slide, you'll see some planted under power lines, which is a real challenge and we've got a lot of them in our community. Um, over irrigation lines, they'll plant them, a lot of times the tree roots tear them up and, um, too close to the greens and tees at the golf course is another challenge. The tree roots are out in the greens, we've even had little trees come up in the greens where the, from the tree roots that are down there. They're trying to grow in our greens even, so it's a real challenge. In the power lines I talked about and blocking buildings and store signage. These are just some pictures from the area where the power, they're up, the limbs are up in the power lines. You get a wind, it knocks the power line down, it can be a real challenge. And, and these have to be trimmed basically annually. And we get neighbors and business owners that don't want the trees. They call us and, uh, would like to see a lot of the trees removed. They can't see my sign on my building, leaves are blown in my yard, tree roots are damaging my wall and my foundation of my house, they'll tell us, they're blocking my view. So, uh, we have challenges like that with our trees. Overplanting, we have a lot of areas where trees have been overplanted too in our parks. I mean, Metcalf Park's a good example where you see the trees are really close to each other and they are competing with the turf and competing with each other for the water. So, that's a real challenge. And, um, when, when you plant too many of the same type of trees in a park, Centennial Park's a good example of this, there's several trees that are all the same, planted the same year and when you start losing one, the other ones go shortly thereafter, that kinda thing. Disease can wipe them all out, then it's costly to replace them all and they're not all real big at one time. So, that's a challenge as well. Lightning strikes, we've had lightning strike some trees and sometimes half of the tree will live and half the tree will die. And we've got one right out this side of the building that's got struck by lightning. Now, there, this is a good example here, trees, turf and traffic don't mix. When you get traffic and you see the roots, uh, the tree roots that close to the surface of the grass, it's not a good thing for the grass and it's not a good thing for the trees. Uh, planting after care, like when you plant the trees, it's important to remove the ties and the, wire ties and the posts that hold the tree up. We get a lot of vandalism, this tree is right out in front of my office and the kids carve the bark off the tree and they'll sometimes knock the tree over, but this tree with the, uh, trees don't heal, they seal. And this tree may live ten, fifteen years because of this and it may end up dying in that amount of time. And it's just, you don't know and so you keep it alive and try to do the best you can with it and, uh, life expectancy of the trees is another thing. This is another interesting thought, uh, uh, statistic which I didn't realize. It says the life expen- expectancy of street trees is seven years. We have a lot of trees on our street here that are more than seven years old, but that's the average life expectancy of them. A lot of the life expectancy of the trees that have been planted in Centennial Park, for example, too, are reaching their, uh, years of life. And they've had a challenging life too, like I say, with the heat and drought and, uh, water challenges we have. Another, uh, challenge is our water conservation efforts and it's not just ours, this is across the state. Everybody wants to conserve water, so we're watering our areas less, watering our turf less and that's impacting the, uh, health of our trees pretty substantially. So, that's a challenge for us as well. I mean, do you save water or do you continue to water heavily for the trees? And like I said, the severe drought the past several years has been a real challenge for us and, uh, trees require deep watering and they should dry out for seven to fourteen days before they get water again. Well, if you do that, the grass is all gonna die. So, it's a real challenge to water, uh, both of them perfectly. And also, we have thirty-four separate irrigation systems that we're, that my department's responsible for. So, it's really kind of a challenge to make sure those are all, uh, performing properly for the trees and for the turf. So, um, tree maintenance is time-consuming, very expensive. Um, we don't have any certified tree workers here. Um, we try to train our employees really good and, and that's a challenge. Obviously, you're working with chainsaws and things like that, it's a challenge. Our bucket truck went down in twenty nineteen, we budgeted for a new one. We, uh, ordered the tree in February of last year and it was supposed to be delivered in March, April, May and it's been kicked back because of COVID now. We called again today, they told us the other day it was gonna be December, now it's gonna be January. So, you just don't know when we're gonna get it. And Public Works has been really good with helping us when we have emergency needs to use their bucket trucks, but they're obviously using theirs too, so, um, but it's, it's a challenge and we're gonna be getting, when we get this boom lift, we're anxious, we got a lot of tree work to catch up on and, uh, we're, we're excited to get it, so hopefully it does come in January. Like I say, tree maintenance, uh, is very expensive. The City of Tempe, their tree budget alone is, uh, two point four million dollars. And we don't really have a tree budget, we just work out of our grounds budget and it's nowhere near two point four million. So, um, anyway, it's, uh, like I said, it's expensive and it's challenging. Um, urban forester is a position that some municipalities have where they, uh, look at the trees, discuss what trees are best for the area and plant, plan ahead and, uh, implement good, they have good records that they keep and everything. And how many, uh, urban foresters are there in the state of Arizona? There's one, the City of Tempe. So, um, we're not gonna have an urban forester anytime soon, but it's important that we continue to train our employees and, uh, get them up to speed with this. When you have an urban forester, like we know how many trees we have, but this is what an urban forester can have, the type of tree, what year it was planted, the work that needs to be done on it, the history, the safety of it, that's another important issue with trees. Utilize experience and train workforce. And what the gentleman said that was doing the presentation, if you can only afford one of these, the best one to have would be a certified tree worker that can go up in the bucket truck. Cause right now, we get a groundskeeper, train him and go up in the bucket truck, running a chainsaw is a, a scary job for a lot of people, so it is a challenge and it's important that we train him and try to get somebody certified in that way. Um, do young trees require maintenance? Yes, they do, uh, some require more than others. This was a good, uh, slide two that they had in the presentation, what you should do before structural pruning and structural pruning for the trees. You can look at many of the trees that we have and see that not very many of our trees were structurally pruned when they were first put in. And you can just see by how the limbs are so thick growing up and tall, long, skinny ones in there. So, it's, it's a challenge, uh, to get, get all that work done, uh, when you're working with a limited budget, obviously. You, utilize accredited companies and I'm not sure, we, we don't contract too much stuff out and I, I'm not sure if there are companies in, that work in Kingman are accredited or not, but it's important to have good, uh, accredited workforce when you're having them work on your trees. The question was asked, how many trees do we plant a year? We plant about, uh, in the neighborhood of twenty trees per year. We plant about, in the neighborhood of twenty trees per year and we, we plant those, we have tree donations, we have memorial trees, Star Nursery donates trees, Daughters of the Pioneers have donated trees over the years, the Corvette Club Arbor Day. And we buy the rest of them out of our grounds budget that we plant. So, and could we plant more trees? Yeah, we could. And like I said, it's challenging, challenging to maintain them and, and I'm really proud of the job that our staff does with the budget we have. I mean, they do a good job and there, there are some challenges that we have. We try to plant trees that do well in our area and this is a list of some of them that we do. And like I said, if, if you plant the ones that can do reasonably well in your area, there's going to be less maintenance and they're going to last longer. So, the trees in Centennial Park, the question was asked, some of the trees are struggling there, ash trees and willow trees, possible causes, there are several causes that I think are, some of them are, are having challenges because of the drought the last several years. Overplanted in areas is another challenge. Some of them are reaching their life expectancy and I think our water conservation efforts have hurt in that way some of the trees there as well, I think. And we're not the only ones across the state, that's what a lot of people are finding that we're all trying to conserve water and you don't see it until it's too late kind of for some of those things. So, this is what we've done in some cases, we call it prune them back for a last chance. And the tree on the left there is we prune it back and the next slide is the trees coming and these are some success stories where we've pruned them back like that and they've come back and bigger and strong. So, you know, and if they don't make it, then we base will prune them, cut them down, get them out and trim plant something else in that area. Here's the references of the people that, from the presentation that I saw. And with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, but like I said, there's some challenges to it and we're doing the best we can, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mearsman. Counselor Staley, did you want to comment or question?
Yeah, thank you for this comprehensive report, I really appreciate it. My concern was really based on, I started at Centennial and then I started kind of paying attention to more of the parks. And I am no expert, but it looks maybe like they, there's a disease because you've got, there's just a lot of trees dying all at once. And so, I was worried that, that it was disease and that maybe it's spreading. And even more so, I, I wanted to know if there, you know, was a plan for replacement, maybe in the next budget, we need to set aside some additional funds just for trees because Centennial, for example, is a park where people will be for an entire weekend. I mean, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but they're there for the whole weekend for a softball tournament and that shade makes all the difference, you know, when you're just out in the sun all day long. You can get under those big huge trees that were there. And so, I, I would like to see all the trees that are dying replaced and replaced with a good size tree so that it doesn't take another fifty years for Centennial to look the way it did a few years ago. So, that, that was kind of the basis for me asking about this is because maybe this is something that we need to address in the budget. And then also, you know, if we need to hire a consultant to come in and, and, you know, diagnose the trees to see if it is something not listed in your presentation.
Thank you. I think it'd be a good idea that we do try to budget some more for the trees and I think, like I said, I think in looking at the trees, we don't see any disease activity, but we think it's more the, the drought that we've had and the, it's, and it's not affecting just us, it's affecting people all over the state are having the same, same issues. So, I think those are the challenges, I think, that, that I got out of the presentation that I was in. So, and like the, when I showed the, how we prune them back, some of the trees at Centennial that we prune back are making a good comeback now and some of them, a couple of them are not responding at all and we'll need to cut those down and plant some larger ones there, so.
You know, based on your presentation, it's clear that one water method doesn't fit all and I think we need to have an evaluation of how to address that fact and probably discuss that in the coming session, budget session, because there's nothing, well, it's quite distressing to see trees dying because of lack of water. And obvious, I'm having some experience from this just based on my own little efforts, but you have various irrigation options, we have various irrigation options and can't just put one out there and think, this one, this zone fits everything. No, there are multiple zones and multiple systems may be needed. I really think that dying trees, whether it's in the city or at the airport or any place, and we've dealt with these, really is an image that is not conducive to quality of life for citizens. And we either have them and if we're going to have them, we figure out how to give them what they need. And they need water, if they need varying amounts, they can be programmed to get varying amounts. And if they need treatments, then there are treatments. So, it is, it is something that takes time and attention, I recognize that. And so, I think I'm very glad for the analysis you've done, for the information you have. I just think as a city, we need to consider what our commitment is to make sure that we, we get the trees what they need and not just let them slowly die. And especially, you know, when we think about the fact that there are farms all throughout Mojave County where the trees are thriving, but they're in this, a kind of a monotone environment and they get the irrigation just like they need it. This situation is much more complex and I certainly get that. So, thank you. I just would like to move forward with taking appropriate measures.
We will, we'll do that. We'll be planning on that in the budget, so thank you.
Thank you. Any, well, any other comment? All right, then we have completed our reports and now we'll move on to announcements, limited to announcements, board and commission liaison reports, availability and attendance at conferences and seminars types of things. So, let's start with Manager Foggan.
You know, Mayor, I do not have any announcements tonight, other than to thank everybody for Veterans Day Parade and for the Parks Department and their effort for the council, I guess we call it the council hay wagon.
I just call it the council wagon. On the wagon.
Yeah, I don't want you to fall off though. Anyway, nothing to report.
Thank you. Counselor Walker?
I would just like to echo the thanks to the Parks Department for the Veterans Day Parade, council wagon. That's very nice, you guys did a great job, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Samley?
I too echo that, he took, they took good care of us, got us some water, was a very comfortable ride, so I appreciate that. I also wanted to say that I took the opportunity to go to the meet and greet and meet the new golf professional, Mr. Sam Hewitt, and I'm very encouraged. So, for those of you, I hope you give him a warm welcome to Kingman when he arrives in December to begin his venture with us. And I think he, he will be a positive addition to the golf community in our city. I also wanted to thank Mike because I did hike with Mike. So, we did the White Cliffs wagon trails. If you have not been out there, I highly encourage you. He may even give you a personal tour as well, but it was, it was well worth the opportunity to hear him talk about all the things out there and to hike the whole trail. So, I am encouraged by what I saw and I'm looking forward to phase two. So, I appreciate everything that everyone has done to make that such a success, so.
Thank you.
And that's all.
Thank you. Counselor Staley?
Yeah, today I spent the whole day serving as a grant panelist for the Arizona Commission of the Arts. And I wanted to, I just wanted to let everyone know that there are a lot of grants out there for festivals in Kingman, we have quite a few and I was disappointed that there weren't any applicants from Kingman. And so, I, I just mentioned this in the council meeting because I know a lot of you are involved in, in different festivals and things. And so, we, it'd be really great to see them be supported by some, some state grant money.
Counselor Nelson?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Staley, for that information because we don't use the grants enough. So, that is wonderful information. And I was there for the Veterans Day Parade, I apologize, but what I'm proud of is that I have heard from citizens who have said they were really, really impressed with it and how, how well it was put together. So, just thank you for everybody that was part of it and have a good night.
Thank you. Counselor Mello?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing to add tonight.
I'd like to have, make just a few announcements and one of them is with regard to grants and appropriations. I was very happy to see that in the federal appropriations request from our senators in Washington, especially Senator Kelly, he has included almost two million dollars for the Stockton Hill widening. This is not approved yet, of course, but we are in there for that request and that would be a big public safety improvement to widen Stockton Hill and we appreciate the efforts that many have made to get that into the appropriations request. In addition, there are grants right now that the city is looking at. In fact, we were just having some discussion on that this past week because there are several targeted grants at the federal level for tourism and also economic development assistance. So, we will be, I know Manager Foggan has committed to looking at those with the team to see if they're a fit for us because I agree that these are opportunities and there are going to be many more forthcoming with respect to infrastructure, both competitive grants and formula grants. So, we need, we are committed to taking advantage of those and, and participating. I also thank, thank the Parks Department about the Veterans Parade and the Fest, I don't remember if that was between now and the last council meeting or not, but I appreciate all the efforts that go into that. I attended the MCC Advisory Council Meeting this past week and I expressed appreciation to all of our partners that are working together there on workforce development issues and especially Dr. Klippenstein, making clear that they are moving forward on our, to, with the community on the Advanced Manufacturing Training Center and other initiatives of that type, which will help us in our economic development efforts so much. I went to the Pharaoh's Car Club food drive and I picked out, I was asked to pick out a few of the winners and I'm announcing this because I think it's really amazing. When I did pick out to, the first one I picked out, I was told by Jean Kirkham that Manager Foggan had picked out the same car, and there were a hundred and eleven entries, the same car several months ago, whenever he judged one of their car shows. And I, I just don't know what the odds of that are, but pretty remote, I would think. It's kind of scary, Manager Foggan, maybe we have to quit spending so much time together or something. I, I want to also mention that tomorrow is, I will be going to Phoenix because it is the last meeting of the Mojave County West Basin Users Study Committee, I can finally say the name of it. But it's the final one and this is quite important because many of us on that committee have been working to formulate recommendations, which we hope to have the group move forward to recommend for legislative action this coming legislative session. This supports Representative Cobb's legislative efforts to create a rural management area and a number of other things. I will say that these recommendations just came to fruition quite in the past week and tonight, I think the council has a copy of, of those that were made by the city of Kingman, by Mojave County, by Representative Cobb and also by Patrick Cunningham, who represents high ground but is also on the committee. And so, those are the recommendations, tomorrow we'll see if, how that goes. Hopefully, we'll get some traction on this study committee and move these forward because they all will help us with our groundwater. I think that's, I think that's it. Would love to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and just have a beautiful holiday. And, well, there is one piece associated with that. At the Car Club, it was a fun drive for food, for the food bank and I spoke to the director and they probably have sufficient food for this, this Thanksgiving, but he's worried about Christmas, so let's continue to be generous. We are a generous community, so let's continue to be generous with our food contributions and have a lovely Thanksgiving and that's all. So, I would entertain, yes, ma'am?
Before you adjourn, I, I do have a report that I'd like to request.
Okay. Oh, goodness. Why do I always forget that?
I like your enthusiasm, but.
Why do I forget this one? Okay, I don't want any more, no, please go ahead. That is the next item on the agenda, council request for future reports and updates. Well, I, I'll make a request first, put that before council announcements so I remember. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Samley.
I'd like to request a report, update and timeline for the Rancho Santa Fe T.I., if we could do that. Thank you.
Any other?
I, I have one.
Please go ahead.
In light of the two citizens that came to speak this morning at Call to the Public as well as some constituents who have contacted me, I would like to have another report from Community Services. You know, I think it's our duty to protect the best interest of our community and ignoring ordinances put people at risk and they also negatively impact property values. So, I would specifically like to hear from Community Services about expected timelines when someone does call in a complaint. I want to know about enforcement and which ordinances are not being fully enforced at this time and why. I'd also like to know what the community can expect from, you know, the time they call in a complaint, whether it's about the dog issues that we heard tonight, RVs, I'm hearing a lot of people complaining about RVs and, as well as, I think it was a great point, if you have a property where it's vacant and it is attracting homeless squatters, what can be done about that as well? And one more thing, I'd like to know if we need to strengthen our ordinance laws or add new ones in order to give the police department the tools that they need to address these issues.
Got it.
Thank you. And I would just add to that, complaints about animals that have been killed on the roads, because I've had that one recently too, as in the last twenty-four hours, that were not, that people were told, we don't pick them up. So, that, please include that in, in that code enforcement discussion.
I, and I'll just add, sorry, I said I was done, but.
Go ahead.
One of the things is like, these RVs are parked on the street, they're only supposed to be there a couple of days. I know of one that's been there for months and now it's being rented out even though it doesn't have, it, one, it's not supposed to be in the front yard, it's being rented and it doesn't have proper sewer hookups or electric. I want to know why that's happening.
Can I refer back to, to the, to an announcement? It's my meeting? Okay, okay, then I'm going to refer, this is on a different subject, but I appreciate the request for the Rancho Santa Fe update. I, I know that there's some information going out in the public regarding, regarding that, that project and some of it mischaracterizes it very much. I would just like to announce that that project is in process and it, you know, that it's like many complex projects, there are many moving parts and, but they are all, they are all moving forward and maybe not as fast as. are all moving forward, and maybe not as fast as, nothing is moving as fast as we would like these days, because there are just many, many things that come up, but with respect to this project, and I, and I've said it in social media, so I'll say it tonight, I will announce that we are moving forward, I want the public to realize that, that there is, the funding is moving forward, and the completion of the project plans, that's moving forward, and as things are completed and, and ready to go public, they will be. So that, that's really the only announcement I wanted to make tonight, because I've been hearing from quite a few people too, and there seems to be some genuinely real questions, and, and based on what's in the media, sometimes I certainly understand that. So that's my only announcement. And now, now, if, unless I've forgotten something else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there any second?
Second, third?
I'll second.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.